The Salamaka City Central School District acknowledged the whole land of the United of Washington, the people of the great though, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaka School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaka City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
All right, good evening all. Kerry Johnson, Vice President of the Board, filling in for Teresa Ray, President, who was contained at work and will probably not make it tonight. So, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, since it was published on Friday, we have two different, or two changes. We added seven, which is the certification of uncollected school taxes, and we've fixed some typos that did not result in subsequent change in the personnel action.
All right, so as I had the motion to approve the amended agenda, motion by Dale, second by Brad. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Can we, can I, can we make sure the question we just told yes?
Oh, I didn't even know it was I. Christian.
Did you have a thumb? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Would you ask?
Were you, were you a yes or a no on the approval of?
Yep, well, I was a I.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, I didn't even realize you were going to. All right. So now I gotta look our thumbs up out there.
All right, Kerry.
And perfect timing, our next item on the agenda is the presentation of our prospect leaders. And I see that they're all entering.
All right, so this is the, almost all of our members from grades three through seven, leadership teams. We have forty-two kids here tonight out of fifty-three, so pretty impressive turnout for this evening. So I think I'm gonna start by just having them introduce themselves and what grade level they're in, and then I'll just kind of give you a little overview of what they've done and where they're going. So, Mr. Camden, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, my name's Camden, I'm on the seventh grade.
My name's Chica Bonner, I'm on the fourth computer team.
My name's Yana.
My name is.
My name's Alvaro, I'm on the fifth grade leadership.
My name is Adelcas, I'm on the, I'm on the ten, I'm on the sixth leadership.
My name is Derek, and I'm on the sixth grade leadership.
My name is Deborah, and I'm on the fifth grade team.
My name is Georgia, and I'm on the.
My name is.
My name is Candy, and I'm on the fifth grade leadership.
My name is Tom, and I'm on the sixth leadership.
My name is Kelly, we're in the fifth grade leadership.
My name is Lita, I'm on the.
I'm on the fourth.
Leadership.
My name is Brielle, Riley Euler, and I'm on the third.
My name is Eaton, and I'm on the fourth team, fourth grade team.
My name is Brendan, and I'm on the seventh grade leadership.
My name is Brendan, and I'm on the.
My name is Brandon, and I'm on the sixth grade leadership.
My name is Riley, I'm on the, I'm on the second leadership.
My name is Eloise, I'm on the seventh grade leadership.
My name is Landon, and I'm on the third grade team.
My name is.
My name is Karis, and I'm on the sixth.
My name is.
My name is.
My name is Kayla, and I'm on the fifth grade leadership.
My name is.
I'm on the third grade leadership.
My name is Eliana Porter, and I am on the fifth grade leadership.
My name is Sinese Spadals, and I'm on the sixth grade leadership.
My name is Evelyn Long, and I am on the fourth grade leadership.
My name is.
Fourth.
My name is.
My name is.
I see you all.
He does everybody, right? All right. Well, I think one of the things that I wanted to just be known tonight is that this is our eleventh year for our third grade team, our second year for grades four through seven. However, of seventh, seventh graders down have all been on the third grade leaders team. So I was so thankful that administration allowed me to bring this program over to Seneca intermediate so that we can continue with those leadership skills. I just kind of wanted to give you an overview of what their year has looked like and what it's going to be looking like, because they have been really, really busy. So, so far this year, all of them have completed their annual fall street cleanups back in October on the twenty-first and twenty-eighth. All of them also worked, most of them anyways, have worked the open house at Prospect, being able to tour families and take them down to their classrooms and do the readers for the building. Currently, the third grade leaders team has their annual Thanksgiving food drive going on this week, so the tables will also be open during conferences a little bit tonight. You'll be able to see those in the red leader shirts for the third grade team, they'll be working the tables. And then on the twenty-first, they'll be taking a field trip to the local food pantry and delivering all of those items and having a tour and learning about the soup kitchen and the pantry. So, third grade is more of a general overview into leadership. They also just recently had their first annual, we're hoping to make an annual Veterans Day celebration, so it's the first time that Prospect has ever done that. It was really awesome, and we had a pretty good turnout. Grade four, their focus is leadership in agriculture. So, they've already made a trip to Pumpkinville, they met with the owners, they learned about how she made her dream a reality. They had a lot of really, really good questions in coding their revenue. In January, they're going to be traveling to Cornell Cooperative Extension to meet with all the departments, and in May, they're going to a dairy farm into the fish hatchery in Randall. Grade five, their focus is history, focus in history. So this coming Thursday, they will be traveling to the Roger Torrey Peterson Institute in Jamestown to learn about their establishment and the history and tour the hiking trail. In January, they will be going to the Salamaka Ravel Museum and Historical Society, and then in May, to the Prendergast Library in Jamestown and to the local library in Salamaka. Grade six, their focus is leadership in business and restaurants. So they traveled to Eckross Bakery and Jamestown Bowling Company. It was such a cool experience, they got to see the behind the scenes of the bakery, actually see how they made things, see the ovens. They met with the head mechanic at Jamestown Bowling Company, they got to go behind the scenes and be able to see the machinery and learn about what all goes into that and the work that, and the money that goes into that. That was pretty crazy, wasn't it? And they are going to be in December going to Kini's Flying Inn to learn about how she started her business, a local, local lady, how she made her dream a reality. And then in March, they're going to a grocery store to see the behind the scenes. How do they know how much product to order? How many companies do they handle and work with? They also recently had Mr. Brian Murphy from Murphy's Concessions come and as a guest speaker in regards to his business in town. Grade seven, their focus is leadership in higher education and government. So they, in October, they went to JCC for a tour, and, yeah, it's definitely, I'm sorry. I know, right? Just my son, who's in the Air Force, he's in New Mexico. Clearly, he's on a different time, so I'm in there. So they went to JCC, they were able to tour the campus and meet with student representatives. They also are going to be meeting with the mayor and city council coming up in December. And then they are going to St. Bonaventure in May and meeting with representation from there, and meeting with tour the campus and just learn about, learn about that, how your education is established. So in addition to all of this, they will have their spring street cleanups. They'll be coming up in April for Earth Day. They will have their volunteer coaches breakfast coming up, and their penny wars that are scheduled for February that then leads into their gift back days. So they'll be coming on and giving back to the community that they do annually as well. Lot of stuff. They have been really, really busy. So they're an awesome group of kids. There's a lot of them. I think we have fifty-three total, and we have waitlists for all of the teams currently. So.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Restaurant, that's probably my favorite. I want to go on the tour next time.
Too? I hate, you can probably keep the last December thirteenth.
I want to go back to Eckross. King Strike Cookies are my favorite.
They learned about that. They, the King Strike Cookies, they saw those, they saw those, and it was really, really neat because they met with the original, well, the original owner is passed away, but then the second generation owner was there and the third generation owner was there. And then he had explained to them how that was passed down through the family and that he actually has two sons, he's hoping will take over that family business in the future. And there's really not a whole lot of scratch bakeries left. So it's really neat to be able to see that behind the scenes, you know, so.
That's awesome. So who in third grade wants to tell us their favorite part?
Don't be shy. You guys will be here again in May.
Well, third grade is, what about fourth grade? Who wants to tell us their favorite part? Oh, right here.
Our favorite what?
Whatever your favorite part of the program.
My favorite part of the program is being able to help people.
Awesome. Awesome. What about fifth grade? Oh, over here. Oh, that'd be my favorite part, too. Sixth grade. Oh, over here, okay. That's awesome. Awesome. Wow. Seventh grade? Seventh grade?
You can't let seventh grade off the hook.
I know. Where's our seventh grade leader?
Fraserian, seventh grade leaders.
Oh, right here. What's your favorite part? Awesome. Anybody from third grade?
Well, I understand that you guys are so.
Third grader? All right.
My favorite part was open house.
Oh, awesome. Awesome.
Busy, wasn't it?
Yeah, I was over there for the Prospect Open House, it was busy.
Yeah, we actually pulled Lani in, she was able to help us. So we, we do always try to pull in other students as well whenever they're able to help and participate. So that was a really cool experience.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Yep, thank you. Thank you. All right, thanks, guys. Keep up the good work.
Go, kiddos.
All right, so we'll move on. That was a great presentation, I really liked that. Next up, we have communications. So Public Communications, Title Six parent advisory. Do we have anybody yet? I want to sign up. Do we have anybody from Title Six? I'm just gonna learn. I guess we'll move on. Central Office Message. Where's Karen?
She's at a conference out of state, so I think she might have got a different time zone and running with them.
Okay.
Wait a second, Christian's in a different time zone, too.
Yeah, come on, come on, Karen. Oh, she does a lot more than me.
Doctor?
Sure, I got some stuff to share. Keep in mind that a fair part of my role is to examine what we're doing, current practice, and our processes and processes and our procedures, and then together we evaluate them for how well we're doing, and then we work together to tweak them for maximum benefit for children. So one of the things we did, Mr. Parisi, Special Education Director over there, and Alyssa Simon and I, we met with a regional epic liaison to custom coordinate professional development opportunities for our staff. So they asked us, you know, what does your staff need? And we surveyed the group and brought back some, like, glaring things that we felt like were really helpful, and they're customizing the consent proposal to us by the end of the week. I met with the famous Marcy Brown, and we began parsing out roles.
And.
We began to parse out roles to ensure the effect of New York State ELA Math and Science Assessment for computer-based testing that we're going to be implementing in grades five and eight this year. We're using paper-based testing for all other assessments that's going to give us a full year to better prepare our students for the CBT mandate by New York State Ed. And I will talk about my professional opinions about waiting for a year another time. But it's a good one, good rationale. Many of our children attend Big Picture in Elkhville during my time here, and I keep hearing this, this person, you know, this student of the big picture, the student of the big picture. So I scheduled a tour, and it was important for me to tour the facility and meet the staff that are with our students. And I am happy to report that I met and housed dedicated staff, every one of them, and they are meeting our children where they are with respect and compassion while providing ongoing instruction in an alternative setting. And our students are thriving there, are taking good care of our children. I hope that was a good thing to report today. We had an IPC meeting this last week, and it was quite productive. We figured out a lot of the financing and budget that was to be used, and a seven thousand dollar surplus turned up that we're trying our best to spend down a meaningful way. Let's use it on certain things, because it's grant-related, so we're working on that right now. I met with our behavior specialist, explained how to best use her in her role. Right now, she's doing a lot of different things, and I want her opinion, and I'm going to start collaborating with grade schools to see how best to use her in her role. We have established a monthly meeting with family school liaisons and principals to collaborate and share needs for each entity. We already had Circle, we actually had a restorative circle, even though we didn't have much to restore yet, which is kind of a, let's get together and know more about each other circle. And what we're finding is where we want to meet monthly, because everybody is so busy and dedicated in their own silos, you know, doing their work, doing their work. And when we come together and we talk about what the school needs are and what the family liaison needs are, then we're able to work together to just do our jobs more effectively. We've been opening up those lines of communication, and everybody seems to be happy with that. I also meet with the family school liaisons, just us, and we've been talking about restorative practice since the presentation that was here at the board. We were all very moved by that and feel that it is a future initiative that we need to pick up some momentum and some speed. So we are talking about implementation, and we already have people in place that are working for us to help with that. So we're working on that. And our instructional coaches and I have been meeting since we came back from Orlando. We learned quite a bit, and one of the things that we decided was, we came back with a renewed and new concept about how we're supposed to be moving and how to best serve all three schools and our teachers. And we decided that we need our principal's support and to assume that they understand exactly how we're moving without spending the conference would be too much of an expectation. So they are prepared to do a wonderful presentation for the board in December, as well as for the principal tomorrow at our meeting at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. So we're pretty excited about that. As we work in collaboration, we think, who's our audience? We think, okay, let's, let's think that we're always preparing our information for the newest teacher in our district, that everything is new to that person, and how best would a document or information suit a new teacher to be able to come in and read something and be able to hit the ground running and look at the picture of curriculum mapping like across the whole year. So that's coming along. I will speak a little bit about the Native American credit team monthly meetings. Last week was pretty exciting, we couldn't even end it. Finally, we just said, oh, we're going on two hours, people, we gotta stop. We're having a really good time. They've been sharing their work and how they're implementing their work in classrooms, a lot of farm to table, real life, real life stuff, cooking. We had a mush lesson, where we all were able to sample mush that Mrs. Cook made. And Gabby, Gabrielle Papa, explained the whole food sovereignty piece of it, which is really important. It wasn't just have a taste. So that part was great, and we found out it was pretty cool. There was a discussion about, about vision, and I thought that was an exciting thing. I heard about an experiential learning center that's something that they're talking about in the future, future, but it sounds very exciting when they went to Albuquerque to receive their reward. They went to school that, you know, that was one of those, why are we inventing the wheel? Let's pick their brains and see exactly how they are making it happen. And they all came back so impressed, and that's something that we wanted to talk back to the viewer about, and will get embedded in our future plans. And we had a Native American talk there. The book was mine, Spread Out on the Ground, Alicia Elliott. She came here and gave our students workshops, writing workshops, and we served lunch, and the writing was just going, going, going. Students were having a great time with her.
All right, well, thank you. That's a lot of interesting stuff right there. Well, let's see, who do we got here? Lloyd?
Yes, sir.
How about you give us an update on the high school? What's happening?
All right, so going back last week was a very busy week. We had a successful Veterans Day Assembly. Always good to see local veterans attending, student body, recognize them and honor them through that assembly. The band, of course, did your men's job of performing some patriotic songs, as well as student presentations. Piggybacking off of what Dr. Patrell said, we did have a writing workshop and interview with Alicia Elliott. She did write A Mind Spread Out on the Ground, which is a translation for a Mohawk word. I'm not going to try and translate that, as I will slant the word. I don't want to do that. She brought much to the table with cultural identity, allowing students to understand her perspective in her writing and practicing their own writing skills. And again, a big thank you to the NAC team for bringing her to the school. Next, I would say attendance is up. It was a goal, a district goal, to improve our attendance in the top two percent of the high schools. That's a good report. We'll continue working on that. And then last night, we had a great turnout for the Keep Up Thanksgiving Dinner. Great to see our student body giving back to our community and serving them at dinner. And great to see the community come out and enjoy a nice turkey dinner, although cranberry wasn't a favorite. My wife put that on my plate, and at first I stiff-armed it, but I enjoy it now. Then I'll just address absolute huge compliments to our staff, student body, and community for their support this past weekend at football championship. It was, it was twenty-two years in the making, and just welcome to bring that title home and to hear, hear the community and their cheers. It was not part of the welcoming parade, but often to see there, looking forward to the football team moving on this weekend and start winter sports. And also, in a couple weeks, the production of Frozen by Iron Drama Club. And then overall, the high school student body's been on task and respectful, and it's good to see them smiling in the hallways and the classrooms today.
All right, thank you, sir. No snow yet.
Huh?
Come on, I think so. Ricky?
Well, there's so many great things happening at Senka. So tonight and tomorrow, our parent teacher conferences, really exciting to see a lot of families, tons of parents and students in buildings. Teachers are really excited to have a great turnout for signups for parents to come in. So we're happy about that. Our EDU program and Power Hour are up and running, so we have lots of active school activities happening from three to five every day, or four. That's really exciting. Mrs. Barry and I had a goal this year at our building, our number one goal was to improve our culture and morale with staff in the building. We're doing some really fun activities with staff. Last week, we did Turkey in Your Pocket, a little game between the staff and the people that they had about, talking to other colleagues that they hadn't actually talked to before, and a lot of laughter and fun. That's exciting to see. We have a soup and salad bar for super educators that we've done, we've done half-day for absolutely amazing staff. We've done lots of input forums and apps and function areas to get their feedback, we've created a meeting. So I feel like overall, the morale is boosting, and that makes staff meetings and the first staff is performing hot nash. Um, assemblies, in October, we had Red Britain Week, and that was awesome. We had some of the teachers on Facebook, they'll be wrapped, they'll throw the proposal in the toilet paper, they didn't, don't get wrapped up in drugs, so that was a really fun assembly. And then in November, we had our Veterans Day Assembly that teachers coordinated together, so Mrs. Barry, and Steve, and and pencil worked together, gathered great assemblies. That's a great team.
Awesome. Eric, anything else to add?
Uh, yeah, just to make extension off of that, I don't want to hear anymore about this more, it's one of the more, she, it was really a goal the second year that we done at Senka. It's been awesome, communities that want to be part of the team, so in first behavior. Stemming off of that, today we were able to celebrate our, winners, which stands for Chief Example Brothers, which we launched last month, that we knew that we're doing this year, where we are honoring students from every homeroom class. They're nominated by their classroom teachers and voted on by their peers for being an example of their classroom and their community and then the school. So today, we had Senator Barello Kane spoke to our students today about just continuing their leadership journey. We had all the parents that we have enjoyed for that. Next week, we have our second annual Certain Trust. It takes off at eight thirty in the morning on Monday. So each grade level will have a forty-five minute window over the while, and they'll do a one-mile loop around that park and that. That headed up by Keith Jones, and then we will have awards for our top winners in each grade level. So coming up to that.
Awesome. Jim?
Yeah, a lot of the very, we have a lot of really great things we got at Prospect as well, a lot of other things. But I do also want to recognize the work that Chris Morris did at the Hall of Fame leaders. But I think it's pretty impressive to see her work with our younger students. And I don't think she highlighted this as much, so I would like to just draw attention to that. She really supports and, I think, cultivating their voice and autonomy and kind of. Supports and I think cultivating their voice autonomy and kind of. Working on a lot of those leadership skills and it's really interesting to see, especially with the young ones. And they they practice a lot, so even at open house and doing tours throughout the building and. Talking about really doing tough things and what it takes to be a leader, she didn't necessarily draw all of that out, but she really has supported them throughout the grade level. But it's really amazing to see the work as it's come to fruition. I think, well, so Power Hour is also coming to an end, we have this the last week for the session. And our Junior Warrior Ten, which is new to prospect, we'll pick that up in about two weeks. And start another session of that. We also, in our teacher conferences, somewhere in Seneca this week, so parents have started coming into the building. But most of our conferences will take place Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Observations are underway, so it's great to get into the classrooms and to have those individual conversations with staff members as well. And kind of on a side note, I know it's not ideal for our community, but we are working on. Kind of phasing in different pieces of our playground at prospect, but we are starting with one section. And we have a committee and we're working with a vendor and that works to be ongoing, but we're big to have. Installation in the spring, so that's pretty exciting. And then, yes, very similar to Turkey in Your Pocket, we did Pumpkin in Your Pocket and it was, there were strategies and people were like. It was a little intense, didn't take away from instruction, but it was nice to see staff interacting with. People maybe that they don't always necessarily interact with and just having a little fun and add a little humor and lightness. Culture is also learning as well, so.
Our class doing such a wonderful job. We have character spotting this week, so each third grade leader has a little pocket of ticket. And what they're doing is handing them off to kids who are showing kindness and I think that's a powerful tool for the kids to use. I want to shout out Alyssa and Jerry, they've been. They've been into our team, our team meetings, our removal meetings. We've been talking about the CSE process with every staff member and then also introducing Alyssa to our, our great, which is great. What else, so many good things, on Friday, we're meeting with the coaches, talk about professional development. And implementing classrooms, classroom management strategies and meeting strategies for ourselves, so.
Thank you, thank you. All right, let's see. Chad, what's going on in athletics?
Big day yesterday, winter sports started. So we're still kind of ongoing on signups, it's always one of the biggest times when we're wrapping up all season and getting into winter. Boys and girls basketball, wrestling indoor track, bowling, unified bowling cheer, and our archery program. It's also. Starting with Justin Moore and Rich Wade. Is that is also running archery this quarter, which is pretty cool. Just gives opportunity to explore that and build their skill. Also, still a pretty big for our hockey district, it's a school. Also exciting time yesterday, we started with a new full-time trainer, athletic trainer yesterday, so that's pretty big for our district. You know, who is someone who's. Familiar, you want to get her fully activated and familiar with our student athletes. In many different ways. A great time for a start. And I also want to promote certain trots, I think that is very cool and I appreciate principals allow that, it is a cool event one day. I'll be, I'll be a part of it, I'll just drive the gator. Is it good or bad, you know, it's promoting a little bit of competition, a little bit of that. A healthy lifestyle and it's not that long, it's gonna all get through it and they get to they get the. To feel that reward of finishing something.
That's all? Oh, okay. You don't want to talk about anything?
Ah, Chad.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll let someone else talk about it. All right, well, I'll leave the rest of you off the hook, because I usually go through everybody, but. Let's move on to our board message. So I think Christian was opening his mic just a second ago, so we'll get started with him.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie, I appreciate that.
No problem, no problem.
No, it's good to see everybody tonight. I am out in Albuquerque, New Mexico for a conference as well with. For the teleconference, which is Tribal Early Learning Initiative, which is do a lot of different collaborating. Essentially to raise the quality of services to children and families, I just figured it'd be a good, unique opportunity to get out here. And learn and continue to, yeah, just continue to learn and collaborate and just kind of, you know, bring that back home. But yeah, I just wanted to touch on the, give Mrs. Morrison and the entire staff there for the, that put together the leaders program, I thought that was amazing. It got me really fired up to see so many great leaders coming down the pipeline and in our future here, that's, that really excites me, so. Just wanted to commend them there and. Oh, the twenty twenty-three New York State School Board Association Convention, I thought that was great, I had the opportunity to attend that. As some of you know, and I took a lot from that, got to meet some other board members and. Kind of just pick some other people's brains, as you know, as far as their experiences that have been doing it a lot longer than I have. And, you know, just really just get to sit down and go out into some great sessions and just, just ultimately just kind of learn and absorb as much information as I can. And I know Chad didn't bring it up and I know Mr. Long did there, but I just wanted to congratulate the Warriors football team. And, you know, I'm bringing home the section six title, I thought that was amazing and, you know, and to see the community support was really something and. You know, be able to bring my, my family out there, my little kids and, you know, just really get to be a part of that and see that and for them to be able to see that. That was huge for us, so I just wanted to commend all the, the student athletes there and, and, and the entire coaching staff and everybody there, so. And my last note is just to remind, speaking on that, just to remind all the, all the athletes that, you know, we are student athletes and just encourage all the students to continue excelling in the classroom. And, you know, if anybody needs any help, then make sure they ask for it. So that kind of wraps up my message, Carrie.
All right, thank you, I was prepared, this guy, he has a list.
I just want to, don't, yeah, thank you.
Good job. Tracy?
I really enjoyed the leadership presentation site with the kids, I like listening to them, what all they have to say. I also attended the New York State School Board Conventions in Buffalo. That was a learning experience, I met some. New board members, some seasoned board members, had some great conversations. The Native American Curriculum Team with the. After a visit with Alicia Elliott, I didn't get to come here to see her presentation. But I did get to have dinner with her the night before, who I knew, and she got the, so, so she could sign my book and that was exciting. Of course, for the beginning coming off the Warriors.
Thank you.
Ed?
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight. The, I kind of like it, I know some of you guys don't, when Carrie's kind of in charge here and runs by through all you guys to hear some perspectives on stuff and it's nice to hear. A lot of the positivity or progress that we're making with our, our kids, both, you know, in terms of athletics and also in. Education. The, well, the thing I just want to say is it's good to see how the kids come into the presentation, the. I can remember, barely remember being that young and it can be a petrifying experience, but a lot of stuff like this. Gets you a little sort of in the future to be able to talk to a lot of people, there's some great programs to see. The, lastly, the, just congratulations to all our, our, our fall student athletes. Like I was saying, the now it's on the winter sports and that program and all that stuff, you can see, you know, athletes and athletics and education going together. Make better students across the board. And congratulations to the football team, that was a big community rally. There were lots of positive stuff across the board on that, I'd be pleased to see. And lastly, just the holidays, school year's flying by, the holidays are upon us, the, just hope everybody has a safe and happy holidays. And no snow.
And what?
No snow.
Isn't that better for honey?
Well, it is, but it's already forty-seven degrees.
Nice to end.
I just wanted to mention, say, great job to all the people involved with planning and executing that. Actually should have realized we got fortunate enough to be an observer. It was beyond impressive. Seeing all the response. And then also wish lots of luck to the football team. Get that tiebreaker.
You three, two after after this week.
All right, what do you got, Neil?
Like. Chad was saying, I can't believe we're past the first quarter of the whole school, you know, and we slice, flies by quickly. And I, I just want to say thanks to all the staff. Administration, teachers, everybody that have impacted our students' lives. I just want to say thanks. Also want to say congrats to all the fall sports teams. Your job well done, football team was better than we were in section six, I see title and I wish them good luck. Look forward to bringing home these hard work.
All right, thank you. All right, as always, thank you all, staff. Everybody who works for this district and services our kids, thank you for everything you do. It's been a couple of weeks since we've met, but in these past two weeks, you've had a chance to make a difference and I appreciate it and on behalf of my colleagues, we all appreciate it. So every single one, that's one of my messages is to thank you guys for everything you do for us. I know the hours add up and you're here longer and longer every week, but it's making a difference, so thank you again. I'm not superstitious. Let's go. I'm not superstitious. Preparation, dedication, execution, it's all there, we have confidence, so good luck this weekend. We'll be there to support you. Couple other things, a couple of my colleagues touched on it, you know, very important this time of year, everyone needs to start thinking about snow. You know, we got, we got a hope where that, you know, that first lake effect blast hits us and it sticks with us all year. You know, we got to get them ski slopes open, we got to get out there, you know, it's very important, so I got to remind everybody about that, Lloyd, he knows what I'm talking about. So, all right, thanks to all, everybody, and yeah, first market period is under the books. Great job, everybody, let's keep up the good work and we're here to learn and improve, so that's all I got.
Great, just a couple other, you know, pretty much everything has been said, November has been a very busy month. And we're entering into an even busier time of the year as we come to the conclusion of the calendar year and all the holidays that are coming forward and the events that go around that. Just in the past couple of weeks, we've seen several community events, including the Veterans Day assemblies that were at all three of the schools. First time we've had individual assemblies to recognize our veterans and I've seen several things up in the halls and that's always really nice to see. To pay respects to those people that allow us and have made a sacrifice to give us the freedoms that we do have. We mentioned already the community Thanksgiving dinner that was happened last night. One thing that was, should be noted is that I believe we had the largest number of students that participated in that dinner in the past several years. So that was good to see and having an opportunity to interact with them, those were terrific kids who were really there, they had a good time and were really interested in giving back to the community, so. A great job to our key club and the advisors and extensions to the Puanas Club. Mr. Early mentioned that last week, we also had a pretty massive, to be honest with you. Active scooter drill that incorporated pretty much every governmental agency in Western New York in one form or another. Everything from our local police to state police, county emergency preparedness, state park police, second nation marshals. Salamaka PD, Salamaka Fire, everyone was involved in one way or another and there was an awful lot that was occurring in a relatively short amount of time. So it's interesting when something takes fourteen months to prepare for and is done in a matter of an hour and a half. To have that all come together, so a lot of learning occurred on that particular day. And the groups will be getting together several times over the next couple of months to continue to debrief and make modifications to the plans. It was great to see our staff, the first couple of hours of that morning, we had general first aid training, including everything from seizures and diabetic emergencies to Narcan. But the Narcan was online, but EpiPen and basic Firda stayed in the classrooms. And then hands-only CPR that was provided in our gymnasium. And, you know, anytime we have professional development for adults, you can sort of gauge the. Importance that the adults place on it by how attentive they are. And I would like to think we always offer very important professional development. But walking into the gymnasium and seeing every single participant in the hands-only CPR. A hundred percent dialed into the instruction that was happening and then working on the mannequins. Was really terrific to see and that's something that is really important across the board. Both for our faculty and staff to use in school, but also outside of school at home, so. That day really was a terrific day, I wanted to thank Mr. Bailey, I'm thinking that he was unable to be here tonight, but a lot of work was put in by him. And our own safety officers who really shine, so. Great job across the board and thank you to everyone who's had such an active level of participation in the several events that we've had so far just this month. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Beeler. Okay, we'll move on, item number five, our consent agenda. We have financial items, which I would ask Karen all about, I'm going to see if I can stick it out on us. We got one conference travel and our CSE CPSE recommendations, so I'll accept the motion to include the consent again. Motion by Tracy. Who's that? Second by Ted, any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, so we have nothing on our old business, we're moving on item seven, new business. First up, I remain budget transfers being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education hereby approves the attached budget transfers to finalize the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Do I have a motion? Second by Dale, any questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Right? Opposed? Christian was thumbs up? Motion carries. Item B, Consolidated Services Unit Memorandum of Agreements. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Consolidated Services Unit CSU MOA. Number CSU Danish twenty-two-three dash zero-one-one regarding the expansion of the position of attendance officer. From an eleven-month position to a twelve-month position be approved and the superintendent be authorized to execute the agreement. Can we get a motion? Motion by Christian. Second by Dale, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Christian thumbs up, opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next up, item C, donation eighth grade class Washington DC trip. So be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Salamaka City Central School District Board of Education accepts a one-time donation from Deborah Holt. Little Turtle in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to be used for the eighth grade Washington DC trip. In particular, towards getting the Friends of Mr. Ross Fund started to assist students who cannot afford to go and a letter of appreciation be sent and. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Salamaka City Central School District Board of Education. Accepts a one-time donation from Seneca Manufacturing in the amount of two hundred dollars to be used for the eighth grade Washington DC trip. In particular, towards getting the Friends of Mr. Ross Fund started to assist students who cannot afford to go and a letter of appreciation be sent and be resolved. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Salamaka City Central School District Board of Education. Accepts a one-time donation from American Legion Riders in the amount of one hundred dollars to be used for the eighth grade Washington DC trip. In particular, towards getting the Friends of Mr. Ross Fund started to assist students who cannot afford to go and a letter of appreciation be sent. And be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Salamaka City Central School District Board of Education accepts a one-time donation from the BFW Post. Fifty-two ninety-six in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to be used for the eighth grade Washington DC trip. In particular, towards getting the Friends of Mr. Ross Fund started to assist students who cannot afford to go and a letter of appreciation be sent, be approved. In particular, towards getting the Friends of Mr. Ross Fund started to assist students who cannot afford to go, and a letter of appreciation be sent, be approved. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ted, second by Dale, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Christian with thumbs up, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for the donations, it's much appreciated. All right, item D, Budget Development Calendar twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the attached twenty-four, twenty-five budget development calendar. Can I get a motion? Motion by Brad?
Second.
Second by Tracy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Christians a thumbs up, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, item E, Standard Workday and Reporting Resolution. Be resolved that the city, Salamaka City Central School District, location code seven zero zero four eight. Hereby established the following, a standard work base for its employees and will will report days' work to the New York State. And local employees' retirement system based on the timekeeping system. Or the record of activities maintained and submitted by these members to the clerk of this body as per attached list in section seven point E, public content. Motion. Oh, sorry, Christian, second. Okay, Dale, all right, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thumbs up by Christian, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Right, item F, Certification of Uncollected School Taxes and Tax Collectors Report. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Certification of Uncollected School Taxes and Tax Collectors Report. An affidavit of unpaid school taxes be accepted and that the transmission obtained to the city tax enforcement office. And the county treasurer be approved following the month. City of Salamaka, twelve thousand, six eighty-five, forty-four cents. Town of Salamaka, three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars, eighty-two cents. Town of Little Valley, two hundred and four dollars, twenty-two cents. Town of Boline, zero. Town of Great Valley, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, twenty-nine cents. Town of Carlton, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Total school taxes due, twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, twenty-eight cents. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Brad?
Second.
Second by Ted, I have a question. Why do we have to post the town of Boline for zero?
I think it's just informational, so if you're aware that that this is all of the uh towns and cities that uh. We collect Texas from that reside in the district, I think it's just information.
Right, yeah. So we have uh first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Christian thumbs up, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Let's collect some taxes. All right, on to item eight, personnel consent agenda. Uh, item A, we have the comprehensive list of all of our personnel action. All right, can I get a motion to approve the uh personnel action under item A? Motion. Motion by Dale?
Second.
Second by Brad, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Christians a thumbs up, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, item C, uh contract, competitive staff, Tanya Costello. Being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Confidential Staff Employee Working Conditions Contract for. Tanya Costello, records and inventory clerk, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, be approved. And the superintendent be authorized to execute the agreement be approved. We're gonna work it. Motion. Motion by Ted?
Aye.
Second by Dale, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thumbs up by Christian, any opposed? Okay, motion approved. And Dr. Miller, do we have any introductions of newly appointed staff?
Yes, I believe we have a couple. The Tanya is in?
Not yet. Uh, no, Tracy, it's Tracy. Um. That chat, and then Tracy O'Brien.
Oh, Tracy O'Brien, yes. But she's. Oh, for a substitution, yes. Um, Tracy, congratulations.
All right. She doesn't use.
Yeah.
She's presumably.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, you didn't let her know she has to give a speech?
I wonder, she's probably got you guys muted.
Oh.
Somebody likes to listen to us.
Oh, all right.
Uh, we also have Dr. Hayes, who is assuming a new role at the district, so congratulations, um although it's not necessarily a welcome, it's welcome to the new role.
Thank you. Do you have a speech?
Yes, I'm glad to be doing this again. Thank you very much.
Awesome. And then I believe that is everyone, so we will make sure that we welcome everyone else. Oh, are you?
I'm Tanya.
Oh, all right, I know we hit Tanya. Yes, well, welcome. Um, was there anything I can say? Oh, all right, terrific, welcome aboard.
Everything, you don't have a stage?
Yeah. I'm here.
All right, terrific, welcome aboard.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, so last up is just item number nine, board information reports and discussion. Our enrollment report is on there. We have our capital project phase three summary report, number thirty-one is on there, and we have a thank you card, which we will read. Dr. Miller, do you want to read that?
I would love to read it.
I was gonna say, I have it.
I got it. Uh, to the Board of Education, thank you very much for allowing us to participate uh in the fall season of Girls on the Run. We have learned so much about ourselves and each other through this program, we have especially learned that we are stronger than we thought we were. Thank you again.
Same by all the kids.
Yes, it is. So the Girls on the Run program has really taken off after, over the past two years, uh and the numbers have gone up, and I think. What's most important with this program is what the last sentences says, or what the last sentence says. Which is that they learn that they're stronger than they thought they were, and if there's anything that we could want to come out of this, uh I think that would be it.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so just to fill this out there, our next Board of Education meeting is same place on the twenty-eighth. Five thirty, right here, and then we have, what's the next one after that? On December nineteenth, our next BOE meeting after that. Um, well, all the information's in here on the board doc, so if you want to look it up, feel free. And thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. Forgot, we got a adjourned meeting, sorry. Here online, guys. Hey, Kerry.
Kerry, there's a new employee, a teacher right from the high school that's in the audience.
Oh. Oh. Who, who is it? Who?
Victoria Smith.
Oh, very well, well, yes, welcome aboard, all right, welcome aboard, so you have a speech. Well, thank you for coming, we appreciate that. Any other surprises? No? Okay.
Add it in with the students.
All right, so now can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Uh, motion by everybody. Second by Ted, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Kerry, we are adjourned, and thank you all for coming, we're excited.
Thank you, guys.